All residents, parents, grownups, lives.
I'd like to bring this meeting to order. We're going to start off by the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could make just a unilateral decision here, but I'm not going to do that. I'm going to ask the board whether they think that we're going to use the money meeting, but only have a regular meeting to this is listed as a special meeting. On your agenda, there's no public comment. So I would entertain a motion whether or not we have public comment or not.
I believe that we have public comment.
The motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, we're going to have public comment. And since we didn't have anybody, our lineup sheet will waive that requirement for that. Is there anybody in the audience that has any public comment that they want to make? Well, that makes it easy. No, that's okay. Then I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as is.
Agreed.
There's a motion in a second and discussion. Not hearing any favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If not, let us move forward with the agenda.
Good morning, everybody. You're joining the, whatever, time. I'm here prepared for you. You should have it. A 2026 Parks and Recreation Budget Summary. And I've also included a list of those recreation programs, special events, athletic activities, senior activities, and rent. I have the rental numbers and the rental income for adjacent senior building. And the third page shows you buildings, facilities, and parks that are maintained and utilized by the Parks and Recreation Department. And then I have a breakdown in all of the expenses for recreation programs, special events, athletic, and senior spots under the line of 2,600. So I've broken that line out, a total request down so you can see what we request to run all, you know, all of the athletic programs, all of the recreation programs. But we have a breakdown of what those programs are on the spreadsheet because it breaks down what we put underneath the categories. But just an overview, as far as we can see, and dig back. The Southport Parks and Recreation Department was established around 1974 with a recreation commission that was requested by the board of management. Year 2025 marked our 51st year in operation as a department. The department has grown since then in a number of staff programs offered and a number of facilities and parks available. The Southport Parks and Recreation's mission statement is to enhance the quality of life of the residents and visitors of the city of Southport through quality recreation programs for residents of all ages and to provide and maintain safe and beautiful parks and facilities for the enjoyment of active and passive recreation activities. We provide a wide variety of recreational recreation and leisure opportunities and experiences from unique communities for residents and visitors. Southport Parks and Recreation employs six full-time, seven part-time, and three seasonal staff. Our full-time staff includes a director, a program specialist, two recreation assistants, a maintenance supervisor, and a maintenance worker. The part-time staff includes camp counselors, the before and after-school staff, recreation program and special events assistant, and the nightly gym attendants. The seasonal staff is composed of the three basketball league referees. And they work January through March, those three. The 26th year budget request includes costs associated with offering 12 annual special events, non-regular recurring recreation programs, 10 athletic activities, and seven weekly senior activities, which are attached to your handout. The cost requested to offer these programs is $60,000, which is the same amount as last year. And there is a breakdown in the total of each category of program in your handout. Just to note, we do partner with multiple organizations to offset these costs. The organizations that we partner with include Brunswick County Tennis Association, United States Tennis Association, National Junior Tennis and Learning Association, Power Walking Industries, Southport Lines Club, Brunswick County Schools, Cape Tier Fitness, Community Relations Department, Southport Fire Department, Brunswick County Computers for Kids, Porch Food Ministries, local churches, and Sisters of Southport. We estimate that we have a total of around 500 people participating in our different recreation programs and over 1,500 people participating in our special event. Southport Parks and Recreation utilizes four buildings, nine outdoor facilities, and 11 parks. We maintain 20 of those facilities and parks with maintenance staff and fiscally in the Parks and Rec budget at the cost of $51,000 for repair and maintenance. We budget all of the utilities in the buildings, facilities, and parks at the cost of $46,200. We have a work order system that we utilize for our park maintenance staff, and it is based out of maintaining X. And we implemented it in July of '24. And so from July of '24 through March the 31st of '25, there was a total of 778 work orders generated. All of those work orders, 583 were non-repeating orders, which are, are, you know, kind of like what we like to classify as, if somebody's called in, it's something you got to fix immediately, not your everyday activities, you know, like routine grass cuts, you know, stuff like that. There were, there were 195 orders that were repeating orders, watering the plants, trashes picked up every Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Those are your repeating orders. A total of 25,476 hours has been spent through March the 31st completing those work hours with an average of 32.8 hours per week per staff working just work orders that were sent in. The 2026 budget shows no increase in requested costs, except those that were associated with personnel. The overall 26 budget shows a reduction in costs from the 2025 budget year. The only capital costs requested in the 26 budget year are for the completion of Phase One that was adopted, the adopted plan for Franklin Square Park. We have requested $50,000 to include the costs associated with moving some of the azaleas to different areas within Franklin Square Park, the addition of three flower beds, replacement of the missing bow stone, and creating a perimeter that around Franklin Square Park. A yearly contract with Bartlett for tree maintenance, staining the stage, stage maintenance, like replacement of boards and wood, fertilization of grass and plants, and the yearly mulching costs for trees, which I can give you a further breakdown of that. If we get into it, if you want to know what each of those will cost, but it totals up to $49,000 something. I know that you guys had some questions. I don't know if you want to ask them or we want me to go through what I was leaving and answer. I said, I know that there were some questions that you guys were longing us to be able to answer. And I didn't know if you wanted to ask them or if you wanted me to read the question and then answer it myself.
I would prefer that you, since that way we show, we probably can make it a lot quicker.
We were sent a list of questions last Wednesday, Thursday, dealing with the department and some of our programs and possible solutions for some issues. One of the big things was the before and after school program. Our department offers a, and the only one that offers a before school along with after school because elementary does not take in until 8:40. 8:40 and you have a lot of parents that have to be there between 7:30 and 8:00. So when, when the county made that switch, however many years ago, split block high school and elementary, you know, we realized that was a need. And so that is one aspect of our program that we offer that no other after school in this area offers. And we currently, we have 20 signed up regularly to participate in before and after school. How many of these are Southport residents? And you said, oh, swing y'all from.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We were asked how many of that 20 are Southport City residents. Currently, everyone that is in the program is a city resident. But with that stated, they may be renting a place, not owning it, but renting it. But they live here.
What is the, what is the cost to the, for each child?
For each child to participate, I did it two ways. The cost for, for our kids, if you included full-time staff, that, but we always have the full-time staff person with one of us is in the building. So if you included this full-time staff along with the two before and after-school counselors, the monthly snacks, which are offset, now I'll get into that in a little bit, and then the fuel to the, to Southport Elementary School and back, that cost is $42.50 per child per week. If you do not include the fact that a full-time person is, is always there and you just factor in the two part-time hired help that is one that, you know, have the most hands-on experience with them, then that cost is $22,000, $22.50 a child.
We charge for that?
Yes.
And what do we charge?
We charge $50 a week per city resident and $60 a week per, for non-residents.
50 and 60?
Yes, sir.
We're not getting any of the 60 right now. So we're not getting any of the 60.
Not, not right now. Next, the next question was specifically, what after-school activities does the program, our program provide? In other words, reading, math, tutoring, or, you know, a daily activities is we go and pick the kids up from Southport Elementary at our theater school, and they come back to the office. They have a snack, and when they're done with their snack, then we do at least 30 minutes of homework time. And basically, what happens with these kids is that on Mondays, they are sent home with a weekly packet of all of their homework. And so our staff works through each child with their packet and what needs to be done on Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, and Thursday night, and signs off on it. So the teacher knows somebody signed off on it. You know, which most of the teachers out there, if there was an issue with homework or something, they even contact us. So they are doing homework. They're at least 30 minutes a day. One other big thing with our program is we, is another partnership where we have the, what's his name? My friend. Brunswick County Computer, Mr. Pennants, yes. He is, has a nonprofit called Brunswick County Computer for Kids. And so they have come in and set up all of the computers, which we have 19.
15 now.
We started out with five.
Yeah.
Which came from them. They brought them in, they set them up, and they programmed them with the information that the school has. So our computers are compatible to what the kids do at school. They can go in and, they can log into their account that they have at school and work on their, work I raid and different programs that they do through the school system. We did come in and do that for us. And which, all of that is offset by grants. So you have no cost involved. And so that, that, you know, really means they're, for them to be able to have access to their schoolwork when they're at after-school care. We also work with a lady, we do a STEM program. We do it four weeks in the summer and eight in the, in the school year. So, and it, it, if you will hear me refer to, you can see a video a little bit. But this STEM program is the program that was a collaborative effort, started out with Cookie and with, what was her, I'm telling you here, but I can't remember what her.
It was, oh, L C, L L C, okay.
And Mark, he was getting involved in getting us equipment for.
I think we got some funding.
Right. So, but this program is with, during the school year, the kids will come to get, you know, picked up and brought to our office for the after-school. And they are split up. Half will go immediately to the tennis courts and, and work on tennis and physical activity and learning about healthy choices. And the other half stays at our building and goes into the computer lab. And Ms. Diana Nail teaches and works with them. And the significance of her is she worked at Brawley in the North Carolina Department of Instruction. And she would go into low-performing schools and, and do activities and tutoring and anything to bring those scores up. That was her job. Now she has retired, but she is still continuing to do that. Brunswick County, who, you know, some still can't believe that, but we are Title I school system and Southport Elementary is a Title I school.
Could you explain what that means?
That means that everybody that attends that school, the majority of them receive free and reduced lunch and have some low-performing scores based on average.
The reason you mentioned the cost with the full-time employee versus without, was the full-time employees doing their job, whether we had a program or not, right?
Right.
So essentially, the cost is $22.50.
Yes.
But we're charging 50 bucks.
Of those children that we have, how many of you are there in the morning?
We have 14.
So their parents drop them off there, then you take them over to the elementary school?
Yes.
You've got 20 something after school. How long are they there after school? What's the hours? I imagine that varies.
Yes, from two, two hours to two hours and a half.
So maybe as late as 6:00 or 6:30 in the day?
Yes, sir.
This would not, my question not mean that you, your program should have this capability. I think the schools would have. Is there any metric that we've taken about those, let's say, those 20 kids? You start the school year at capability of doing this. They're going through this program, and at the end of the year, they can do Y. Compared to their kids that don't go to that program, how do we know that any of this stuff is actually making a difference? This is a problem with programs throughout the whole country. This is not just the problem with the teaching. But how, is there, does the school system have a way for you to help track any of this to show that those particular kids have progressed, perhaps more than others that didn't go to the program?
I can't answer those stories. I don't know how they measure.
Do they have to come to you or there's no, do they have to?
But we have Diana Nail, and that's our specialty, is bringing low-performing schools with test codes, bringing them up, their scores up. So that may be some of the conversation that you can have with her. But she.
I'm looking for a good, useful word. The city's doing something as a program. Title I, the Title I kids coming in. And based on this program, they're actually getting extra benefit. You can say we have the program, but showing that they actually, it actually meant something for this respect. But that, that, that program worked. And you showed taxpayers that this is really, really good thing throughout the country. Governments have a very hard time justifying programs that they have. That there's a metric at the other end of it that says we can improve the lives of somebody through this program. Suggesting that since you have your subject matter expert on stage, that perhaps you can help us how to put something together that will show that kind of thing going forward. Does that make, does that make sense?
We've had parents and teachers actually to tell us that they've seen a difference in the students' performance and things like that, and they have come to us.
Well, maybe we need to figure out how to capture it. Since we have somebody who's much smarter on it. As we can just ask her how, she might be able to help us document that going forward.
What is our capacity? So if we've got 20 today, how many could we have?
We've had up to 35, yes.
Yeah, I assume these are, these are probably more vulnerable.
So you're talking about good feel-good.
Well, the feel-good, that's a.
Yeah, it's a picture. I'm looking for real. Mental stability, security.
Safe place.
Mentorship. I don't think you can value those.
Well, you can get that in other programs. You say, it's a given that the kids are safe.
Mental stability, security, safe place. I'm not judging the 20 children, but there might be a few that might not have that. A lot. And if we're providing that, it's well worth $22.50.
If we have a situation where we see that people have told you that the kids are making progress, we need to really hone in on that. we need to really hone in on that. We need to let people know that's happening. That's a a big feather in your cap if you can show that. I mean, that's time spent, and that's doing a lot for that child. And if the teachers in school are seeing it, you know, we need, we need to capture that. And we need to push that, let people know we've got a value added program here. Just valuable for us, it's valuable for children, it's valuable for the schools. Because we're doing more they don't have to do.
So let's just go back to the twenty two dollars and fifty cent, that's.
Yeah, the pilot did do art school at one time. I can't remember exactly what year about our program and the significance of it. But when I said I can't remember what, and he put a video in a little bit more specific about that program. But this year um has been, or this year is the fifth year that that program has. This is um National Junior Tennis and Learning. Um, the network was founded in nineteen sixty nine by tennis legends Barbara Ash, Charlie Correio, and philanthropist Sheridan Snyder. It features more than three hundred and fifty nonprofit youth development organizations that offer free or low cost education programming to more than two hundred thousand under-resourced youth each year. Um, for the fifth year in a row, that Fort Marks and Recreation has been invited to the North Carolina Tennis Foundation's Summer Tennis and Enrichment Camp, which you can take them up there July nineteenth in Winston-Salem. And this program has won the National Program of the Year for the NJTEL. This is the fifth year in a row.
So where do we take them?
This year we're going to Winston-Salem. We've gone to Greensboro.
So you stay with them that?
No, no, we go up that morning and um we stay from nine till four, and we come back home.
You say we, is that you?
And then the other sister.
And you drive the bus, probably.
Yeah, drive the van and the bus, yeah.
Drive them up there all day and then drive them back.
Yes.
So the cost, I mean, right now, this this particular program is costing us, is it, is it a true cost twenty two dollars and fifty cent or is that the employee cost?
No, that's the true result.
Okay.
Because that includes the snacks and.
So we're making money with this program?
Yeah. We talked about this program in rate committee also, which we'll come back to our discussion later. Um, but based on that discussion, I was adamant about the fact that this is a program that is needed by the people who are using it. And raising the cost of it, I think, would be detrimental to those people who are in fact um taking advantage of this program. Uh, so I think that um we're in a good financial position in this program. It's not meant to be a for profit, and I think that this is not one of the programs that we will have to try and increase our revenue versus your region.
If you're in a situation that you can't handle a lot more people, to do that, you're going to bring in extra people to come.
We did, we never ever allowed a situation where uh there is one child with one adult we don't need theirs to uh always, whether they walk to the next room, um into the next building. Yes, they are, they have to um do staff members with them.
What's your maximum capacity?
Do it.
So they had thirty five.
Thirty five, yes. In the summer, we had, um, we've got forty five. Forty five to fifty in the summer. So we've had to use our bus and our two vans to transport. Do the different activities, you know, where we took them to Jungle Rapids, skating, various places.
So the, so the cost in the summer is the fifty dollar per week as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the summer cost is different.
Right, because we have those activities that we have all day. Right, yeah, yeah.
So we're, we're charging for the summer programs.
Yeah, it's nine a week for sleeping. And then twenty it's. Or non sleeping, non sleeping. The cheap, say those numbers again.
Nine for incentive can one fifteen.
Pretty good deal. That's a good deal.
And then they pay for like Jungle Rapids, the Bubba Beyond that, or is that inclusive? We get some kind of discount?
We get a discount. They uh Jungle Rapids, they give us a discount. They, they give us, they have a shout. But I have a copy of the, that information. And June and July um have, if anybody wants.
So the cost includes these other programs, the one places for the most part? Okay.
And it's great for the kids because they're not just sitting in the building all day. They're.
Agreed.
They're.
Agreed.
Where do you want to sit then?
This is a summer program.
Yes.
What all do you go for addition to? Um, we go to Jungle Rapids. We um, this year we're starting back onto B C C swimming. Um, we go scooters, we just skating, we go bowling. Um, we take them to White Lake. Yeah, we take them to the movies, uh we take them to the White Lake Water Park. And um.
So are they, when they go out to B C C, most of these kids can swim or they're learning to swim or what is the?
Some are learning, um, most of them can swim, but some are learning. And um we had talked about doing a partnership with B C C uh swimming lessons for those kids that don't know how to swim. As we see how um important it is for them to know how to swim. So like I said, we have talked to them about doing a program together to um have.
Um, and the Jack Heidenberg Foundation may be some opportunity there as well.
Yes, yes.
All you have to do is, they should be, they should be going home, talking, you know, a little bit.
Why don't we go back to my, my soapbox here? And that is, that program sounds really neat. I see virtually no not even how the kids, the other kids who aren't in the program know that that program is going on. I don't know how we communicate that to the rest of the world. I'm sitting here, I don't know that you do all those things. How do we do a better job going forward, advertising that we actually do all these really good things? And then, at the next light of a news report that was months, years ago, under the population here, as Mr. as the old man Spencer reminds us all the time, turns over. So we have to constantly come back to advertising with some need, some communication of the programs that we're doing, that you actually get back for the buck for this, with having a recreation. We know about the park, we hear about the park all the time. That doesn't seem to be an issue. Which park, park, doesn't seem to be a big issue. But um it's, it's a recreation aspect of it. It's not see us as a city being able to market ourselves as the good things for you.
I think if we get to the parents.
Well, the kids themselves, I mean, my children beg me to let them ride the parks breakfast home because the kids, the kids are talking about it in their classes. You know, getting it out to the parents who can put the kids there, make those decisions, I think would be.
I think it goes forward at the elementary school. I remember flyers coming home about it. I remember emails about it, like they're, they're getting that information to the parents at Southwood Elementary. Um, the other schools are outside of our area, so they.
They say hear about it. And some of those schools do bring their kids to programs, but they hear about it, you know, from other parents.
Right.
They might work with a parent that has a child that's in Southwood. And they worked at the complex, I'm saying, and their child goes to the Ligon. And you hear about, you know, what is this program we have? And they're like calling and wondering, you know, if their child could join or whatever.
So there is drop off available as well? Like if a parent picks up from a different school, we can drop off to our after school program at Southwood?
Um, they can drop off. Right now, we don't have enough, well, we don't have enough staff to actually go to the places parents want us to come to. They want us to come to the state in Sunset Harbor. Um, they, I've had about five or six calls. They want to put their child in our program, but we don't have the staff to drop them, pick them up after school.
I, I understand that. I'm saying if, let's say there's one parent who has their kid at Sunset Harbor and they have a thirty minute break from work, they can pick their kid up, drop them off in Southwood, then they've got to go back to work. Is that an option for them?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they can uh their own transportation to our building, there's it.
You know, one, one mechanism we have that we could use to promote this is Bob. Put some kind words in the paper about what these people are doing.
You will be.
That's it.
Well, I think we want to be sure that we're clear that we're poking at this and getting all this information because we have to hear from taxpayers who are focusing on only spend on needs, not on wants. And we're, as Frank said, um, this is a value added program, and it does fulfill some needs. And so you're giving us good information that helps us justify spending of it.
Not everything out there we can say is value added. This is definitely value added.
Absolutely.
You can show that anywhere you want. If, if this serves a purpose. We need more people like this everywhere.
It, it's a long term game.
Yeah.
The true danger here is, and was, I feel this, is that the next generation will not stay in Southwood. And so these programs build community amongst these young kids. These are my friends. They might not, uh, it's, my heart believe, but Cape Fear Drive and down here in the yacht basin, we didn't really get to play together as young children until we got on a school bus or in one of these events. So it brings the young people together and builds community. Maybe three or four of them might say, I want to stay here and grow up and let my kids experience that, the train. So we have to be intent on what we want the future of Southwood to be. It is heavily, top heavy in terms of age demographic. We've got to nurture the endangered demographic, which is these young people. And it's, it's more than just taking care of that school. It's investing long term in diversity in Southwood.
I think that as long as the program is bringing that educational perspective and doing all of the things that y'all are saying is part of the program, it's hard not to, to get behind it. It's not costing us, making us money. But it has to do what you say it's doing.
Can it scale and it be self sustaining, self sustaining or pay for other things? Give them computers, last red ties.
I'm less concerned that it's, it's returning profit on it. I'm more concerned about your, your turning lives on it.
Yes.
That's what I'm more concerned about. Whether it loses a dollar a student a week in these areas, that's. Um, the real problem, the real issue that I want to make sure tightens all down, we actually communicate out, is that it's not just a warehouse. Not just sending kids into a room and they're just being, they're safe, but they're not helping. As anybody who knows anything about the school system in around after COVID, not only this area, but the state, most of the states are suffering severely trying to catch the kids up. Was staying home, thinking that they were going to do work online was not going to work because I bet you most of those kids that you have don't have internet in their house.
It's not.
Some of them might have it, but we also have to have the parental support to be able to support that. You can't ask an eight year old or a nine year old or a ten year old or even a high school kid. Be focused enough unless you have the parental supports to do that. So it's, it's multifaceted about how to, how to do that. Now we're in the whole, not your program, but the country as a whole with these kids that are underperform, they were underperforming before, now they're really underperforming. And how do we help those kids move forward? That's what I want to talk about. That if you're doing all this good work, how do we market that? And potentially, how do we show that we're actually improving their lives?
COVID kids are almost out of elementary school. My son was in kindergarten when we were sent home for COVID, and he's in fourth grade, finishing fourth grade now. Um, so we're kind of at the tail end of that. We're going to see it heavily in the one high school um going forward. But um the, the COVID kids, as we've kind of come to call them, are moving out of elementary school. We've got only one year left in elementary.
Well, we were Title One before COVID.
Yes.
Yes, so.
But it was really interesting to have a kindergartner who could read, sent home with a computer to be told to do their homework.
Yeah, which is absolutely silly. The whole, the whole country was silly in this whole process because you, you did not have the supporting mechanism to do that. The fact that they, the state put wifi in buses and parked them someplace, which would require a parent to drive the kid and sit with the kid in the parking lot to be able to do the wifi meant that they weren't working. Many of these cases do have dual incomes just to make ends meet. And so the system was destined to fail unless you're at a certain economic level and that you could afford to do these steps. You had wifi, you had some personal support. But I, I, going off on a soapbox that is not yours, you're in your, in the making. But I want to make sure that we're actually fixing that. As a little, our little piece of the puzzle.
And during COVID, during that time, we offered um the onsite at our um building, we offered um the program so that it's to come there and do their work. And they didn't have access. Yeah, they didn't have access to.
Do we have any kids take advantage of that?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Okay, good.
I think the pilot might have done, they did not work on that because we had um offered that program for them, yeah. And just another thing to, it's a, and going back to it and near and dear, there's such a or because she is a former Japanese school system teacher. At Olivia Elementary.
I'm frankly surprised if more kids are not taking advantage of this. Do you, do you have a, a cutoff number now? And that's all you can take? Do you have people that you can't take? I mean, that, that have asked to be in the program and you're at capacity, you can't take them?
We have, and just like now, um with our summer program, we had to cut it off because we're back back this year.
So you're, you're back to that this year?
Yes.
Another great story?
Yes.
I just, I don't know why I hear more about Oak Island than I do Southwood, and that's, that's always bothering me.
What do you hear?
But I know they're part of regular.
Okay.
Part of that because I work with some of them. Are you sharing problems? We don't have this to say. But I want to make sure that we get the credit. And I don't mean that like braggadocious. I want to get credit, when I say credit, I mean we're making a difference. That's the part that I want to make sure we do.
We need to sing that song loud and clear. Or give some praise to all these people.
Have they go right ahead with the rest of us?
Okay, that's the Sunday Avenue Clinic. Down in Taylor Field.
They did one yesterday. I think your kids.
Yes, ma'am, they did. Freddie's pretty excited.
Another aspect about that, Dan, I'm just, let's, you know, tell you a couple of neat things about it. We also, um, partnered with Wendy Jones, um, and her ministry is called Power Walking Ministry. When we, when we first offered this, we had kids that came, um, to, uh, to attempt to do the, um, program, the tennis program with flip flops. Um, had no tennis shoes whatsoever. Yeah, so we ended up for them, yeah. So Wendy, um, from her Power Walking Ministry bought every participant that participates in that program during the school year and during the summer, a new pair of tennis shoes. And they're, they're not the cheap tennis shoes. The kids love, yeah. So the parents are like, okay, you wear, you wear your tennis and put them back in the box and let's go start. Let's show them.
Trouble is their feet.
Yeah.
Participate in the program, my guys, buy new shoes.
Uh, and Wendy was the PE teacher at Southport Elementary for years. She was actually the PE teacher when I was there.
Yes.
And then she was the PE teacher when my children were.
Yeah.
She has retired, but.
And the kids love her.
Oh, yeah, everybody loves her. And again, I just, no cost to the city to provide them, through my nonprofit. And they come in and get the childrens and they go out there, y'all take them out there. Right to shoe shop, to shoe shop. And, um, they let, they pick out a pair of shoes and, um, get their size.
Yeah.
That is a great thing. And again, that is the city to thank those people. At our level. You love us, you know.
To give a little appreciation of.
Well, yes.
One of our meetings.
We could figure something out, but.
So Bob can take pictures?
So. I just wanna make sure that all the people that are helping you, that are recognized for their work and contributing to this.
It seems like we provide a lot of resources that we're not paying for.
Exactly.
Where it's, uh, everybody's coming through you with their nonprofits to help you give them a place to go to find the need. Which is really, really exciting.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Other questions?
I don't think you have others.
Um, that was Anthony. Um, how many students are in Southwood Elementary School after school program put on by YCA? I, we, we contacted them twice and had not heard from them. But through other teachers, at Southwood Elementary, we were informed that they had a, a total of six.
That's what I heard as well. Four or six.
Yes.
What's the, is, what is the cost of their program?
Their program, you pay a thirty-five dollar registration fee. And then, um, you will have a member and a non-member fee. The member fee is actually if you, um, are an actual member of the Y, the membership is a hundred and ten dollars a month or one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a year. And if you are, have that paid, if you pay that membership, then it's fifty-three dollars a week. And if you don't pay the membership, then it's sixty-five dollars a week.
Well, it can't be a membership unless you're driving Wilmington, there is no YMCA here. There's no YMCA in front of a campus at the moment.
Are they offering anything comparable to what gets given in our program? Does any place or any, is there any program comparable in Southport?
Well, what are you talking about? Because I think part of this is the program, uh, first, after school. So after school, I think is very similar in it's educational, it's got some of those, you know, benefits, but it doesn't necessarily have the additional added benefits that ours has where they're taking them places during the summer or for, you know, this idea that they're going to the tennis courts, splitting up into two, the computer lab. So I think two, and, and I think they may be too different to compare. But it seems pretty expensive.
Those are the true costs. Doesn't make any sense. We've been in elementary school and they can bring them over for you. Seems like you're doing a lot more. We're dealing with that a lot less.
Any interaction with the school board is, you know, I heard that Roger Bacon, they get this private place that gets government money to a point. Do we have any way of getting any kind of subsidy for doing these with the school system? Speak with Mr. Barger and see if they will, if they work with, with us in a way where one of their buses would bring them to you.
They don't have that much service, does it?
Yeah. The, the Y program, is that offered in the other elementary schools throughout? And this was the first year that they've offered it? Second year, okay.
You've got only six kids.
Well, look at the cost. The cost is, if you see, if, if you had a family membership, I had the Y, which you're not gonna have, even if it wasn't in Southport. And it's, it's a lot of money.
Well, that's not, uh, a form of care. It's not forced to care.
Right, it's also, yes.
That was all the questions.
So I had that. There was more, but I'm gonna jump to the building part. So we had the report. And then there's the, I need it fixed immediately. What does that mean? So I need it fixed immediately and you can put on categories. But this coming year. He says I can fill this, but then. And print on my documents or sort of more, I actually had to go the other day and get a new prescription.
I can't print on it.
How much money do you anticipate having to absolutely need for this coming year, maintain the buildings, the best empire that you have to build?
Are you referring to like the bare maintenance?
Yeah, that kind of stuff. Not, not the general, you know, then plus, but the, the things that were identified in the.
I, I can't.
Um, okay, so for the Southport Senior Building, it shows that there's, um, uh, forty-three thousand dollars needed to fix the, but the stuff that needs to be fixed isn't a safety concern. Um, it's just talking about the paving, curbing and parking.
Okay.
Um, and the flat work, that is in railings. Um, and.
I'm just looking for that, the bottom line of, of all your buildings. If you haven't checked an idea of what, we absolutely, you know, we can get away with this year, that, that safety issue.
Well, is this the number that we have you? Is this where bare maintenance of facilities in the budget? Is that forty-six thousand or forty-one thousand? That's not capital for it.
A lot of this is in, we'll take Tom Stanley's budget. Remember Tom Stanley's guys does buildings, our guys does grounds. So there is, um, you know, his line items, we have what those facilities are.
So I'm asking the wrong person.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
But I can't, uh, what's on which building, um, if that's still.
No, I just want, I just wanted to figure out how we're coming, coming closer to June.
I did look at all of the reports for my, for buildings that we used and nothing was flagged as a, um, a safety. It's more dealt with, it's one of them, period labor. And it's gonna get to that point. But structural, foundations were fine, building frames were fine.
We're talking about the gym, the Parks and Rec building, JC building and the seniors.
Correct, and this building too. That's right, that's right. Did you get the local senior building fixed?
But I will say that's important. Yeah, I mean, it, it, my, my guy did it.
There is, you know, in the current year's budget, there is capital expenditures, seventy-five thousand dollars in capital for, for improvements. So outside of Tom Stanley's budget, there's an opportunity for us to look at that high cap report and within fund amounts, fund additional capital needs for park buildings and things.
One thing that, um, that, is that included the seventy-eight thousand? That earmarks just for, um, Cabbins Park?
It's all together. So there's seventy-five thousand for park buildings improvement, fifty thousand for Franklin Square. So that's.
So that's already earmarked for Cabbins, which we will have that completed in June and have done, maybe rebuild the stage to add the handicap ramp and redo the entire fence and the, and the rest of these.
We're talking about Cabbins.
Cabbins, I guess. Did you guys want, I mean, that kind of covers the, um, before and after school programs and what, what happens and what we do, um, and calls.
So we just started the senior section of this. How is the senior resource center for the county being so close to us? Has that created such a competition that we, I mean, um, you've got your group that comes to your facilities and do they go to both?
Some of them do, yes.
Okay, um. Are we keeping up with our senior? I mean, we're doing good with our, I know back in the, you know, I have a art gallery. My art gallery is of Minnie Lee Spencer, who attended Parks and Recreation and learned how to paint. And those are, other than my burial ground, they're my most valuable treasures. They go with me wherever I go. So are we doing those kind of things? Or has the, the senior resource sort of took those up?
We have, they have craft classes, but they do, one of them instructors does work with painting.
Yes.
And their tendance, how many?
Um, fifteen to thirty. We have, and they have like, um, pottery. They do wire jewelry making, um, they make dories. Um, like the stepping stones you do with the, um, class of therapy. They do various things and they, uh, have their exercise classes Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And, um, on the second Wednesday of each month, they have a burn a dish where they prepare food and sometimes we'll prepare some food for them and bring it to the burn a dish.
Are you tied into the county's planning to do with their senior center?
We've never been asked a part of that.
No, so.
Are there future plans for the seniors?
Oh, they're gonna move it.
Oh, yeah, I knew that.
But I mean, as they move it, because allegedly their buildings aren't big enough for what they wanna do. And it's supposed to, there's word amount, nothing that I've ever seen on a piece of paper. It's either gonna be in Southport or right on the border of Southport, so it's gonna still serve the same community. At, at some point, is there a duplication of services? And that's the question that we have to ask ourselves, is that duplication of services? Do we, if they, if they're going to a bigger structure and more people and more stuff, do we?
Bow out.
Bow out from senior programs and defer to them because it's, they're, they have a bigger, brand new, they're gonna have a brand new facility.
Investment.
So, so.
The investment.
The investment, they're gonna spend a lot of money on this whole thing. So, uh, I think we need to figure out relatively soon what that looks like. They should be able to tell us. They have Parks and Rec. Yes.
Well, what is it costing us and what are we making on it? So we know what the kids are costing us and what we're making on them, what the seniors costing us.
Um, right now, we have a long business. With all of the senior programs, it costs us nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
For a year?
Um, yeah.
And what are we making?
You have a book, you know, so we do better.
Do not have that, I can do it.
But that doesn't count the cost. The senior programs, probably has more. I like in JC building, we use that building today?
They have their senior building.
Which we have to maintain, keep that building, both of them. So that's cost detector. Cost, we have to figure that into the total cost of, how much is it going to cost us to run the program? Compared to the number of people that we're serving? And is there duplication of services with the county, which is, as far as I know, they're free. So these, some of their classes.
So these seniors events that you have, how much do they cost you to do? Is it a weekly fee, one time fee, yoga fee?
Well, no, we have a charge to pay.
Okay. So factoring in on things like the materials, the time of the personnel, um, the vehicles. When you, you take the place, that's right. Okay, personnel, uh, vehicular cost, et cetera. Uh, factoring in all of that as part of cost accounting. From, uh, again, the wants versus deeds. Would we be shortchanging our seniors? If we discontinued the program and encouraged and perhaps facilitated having our seniors go up to the senior center? I don't know that I'm in favor of that, but this is things that taxpayers have been asking. Why, why are we even having this if there's this great program a mile away? With free lunch.
Right.
I was gonna say, they feed you free lunch. As long as you make our county taxes, we could get more our county taxes.
They do a small donation, that's one of the advantages.
So as we talk about the senior building, the senior building is insignificant disrepair, right? Like there's some things that need to be done. I ask that because is it a possibility of us, uh, moving the senior programs to the JC building? And would it conflict with the rental of the JC? And would it conflict with the rental of the J C building?
I mean, I would, that would be, we would have to do some weird, see the special ones.
So, I only ask that because I see the senior building as a, uh, a structure that we can maybe do away with.
It does bring in rental fee, I believe, alliance, and some people, uh, rent it for their birthday parties and some points.
Yeah, but how much does it bring in?
So we can talk about the senior. So we've got, so on your page, you have seventy-seven twenty-five in the J C building year-to-date and twenty-three seventy-five on the senior building. The last page ten.
So give me.
Twenty-three hundred seventy-five dollars.
I'm not hearing these numbers clearly. Okay. Hit me again.
On page ten.
First time.
Okay.
You're gonna have to point it out. I don't know where you are. What is the number?
So in J C.
About this page, oh.
Oh, I got two pages.
I got two page ten.
Second page ten.
Yes. Ten and eighty, I mean, ten and eighty.
The senior building, it takes in twenty-three hundred dollars.
Right. Is, that building can't cost us more than twenty-three hundred dollars to pay. So, I mean, I, just hear me out. Do away with that building. Go back and, and put calmariums or something there that we can then improve. What? People die to get in places like that, so. So.
What your dad.
Well, um, and, and we reduce our cost associated with that and then figure out how we move those programs to the J C building. I'm not saying that's something we didn't do right away, but it would certainly be something that I would ask you all to entertain or look at and see if that's a saving or, because that building, we're gonna have to spend money on.
Or, I mean, and I won't know the scheduling, but during the summer it won't work because the kids are in the Parks and Rec building. But during the school year, is there an opportunity to use the Parks and Rec building for senior activities during the day when the kids are at school?
Sometimes, you know, being on, yeah, during the weeks of spring break camp and there and teacher, and, you know, that, that just have the, the label.
J C buildings rents, but if it just rents on weekends or evenings or whatever, I mean, just like we, we work around the schedule at this building and at the community building right now, there's opportunities to enable that.
So the, and most of the senior programs are skid, right? Like, they, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday for certain thing. I would just say, for, uh, from, from our person, maybe just look at that as an option to cut costs, save some money.
Because it's not, it's not the cost of the dollars of you running your program. It's like nine thousand dollars. That's not a big deal. Big deal is the building costs and, and as we go forward, they're only going to increase. So you have to figure out how to maximize the buildings that we have that we need and, and if we're gonna put money into it, let's put the money into a few rather than maintaining a bunch of buildings that are virtually empty most of the time.
So functional, unsullied.
Mark? Mark, has the cemetery committee been talking about, um, expanding Northwood? Okay, for a cog bearing? Or, and it's even cheaper to have a burial barn.
Mm-hmm, well, we had one out there on Bethel Church, and we getting away with it cheap.
But you can set ten or twelve times more if you build them up.
Well, that's like, oh, we could have, could have buried and made trees out of it, out there on Bethel Church, really? We don't have the money to buy this.
We get it done in this, uh, it looks like it might be a free one.
Of course, they're selling one of the St. Paul's, what? Five thousand.
Five, seven thousand, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the St. Paul's, uh, church has been, um, proposing and coming up with schedules and whatnot, I mean, they they're not going for it, they're like, they were selling, I, I guess you'd call it a drawer. If your drawer.
Niche.
Uh, niche, okay. Four hundred five thousand.
What else do you have?
What's up?
I'm gonna do what Mark is doing.
I have, I have.
Go ahead.
Uh, I do have to get you go in a, a point of, oh, thank you. I have to go over something that I may not have access to here, but I will take discussion.
Um, you're using a software with work orders scheduling. That's really isn't a question for you. Have you looked at this for our public works part?
That is what they use, uh, is that right?
Not really.
So they, I know that we have a software, and then we talked about it last time, they do have a similar work order software.
Okay, that's.
So now.
I wasn't real clear on that.
Right, so they do have, as work orders come in, they do have that, it's not overall general schedule where they go as far as employee scheduling, but they do have similar work order system where work orders come in.
Okay, which, which brings me to, as, as, as much of a question is, I, 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 our software, those kinds of software need to be standardized. They've got the, whatever program, best program, so that then they'll talk to each other. Because one of the things I was gonna bring up, which is, we're answering the question for, you know, the conversation, is something that we brought up, um, during, we're talking about work, is that for me, looking at how many, if you go in your budget and you have four buildings and, you know, eleven parks and nine facilities, like the Kaipan and all that, and you've got one maintenance supervisor and one maintenance worker, then it's very clear that y'all need help from the six people from time to time that are public works in order to be able to, I mean, you've got just maintenance things like blowing, if you went around and just, that'd be an all-day thing to just go and blow everything every day. And if it will only stay in good repair, if that kind of maintenance is gone, long-term, which you're not really, I can go, I went to the, um, your Parks and Rec's master plan and just looking at, in order to really maintain all of our Parks and Rec's facilities, they needed six maintenance people. So, and that's kind of how it was before relying on people, but it didn't work as well because you needed people in your office that were focused on the steps of what needed to happen. So that for me, um, and it was Tom, Tom during our public works discussion, uh, said that they're there to help you. So I think, I know you, this program is, y'all, y'all just got back from painting, you ain't even had it a whole year yet. So I know that y'all had to get the software, you had to do all of these things. So now that you're up and running, I think it's important to maybe, and this is just advice, it occurs to me, that it's important if y'all to look at all that you, and to be the most successful you can and work with the city manager, public works, to have them come in and maybe, like, I questioned who needs to be watering the plumbing boxes on the street scape. Doesn't need to be Parks and Recs, needs to be public works, they're the street people, uh, you know?
Did they see them doing that the other day?
No, the Parks and Rec staff is still doing it, as far as I know, I don't know, I haven't seen it lately. But, um, so I just think there's a lot in order for you to be able to be as successful as you want to be, especially within that maintenance realm, is that as you're working for that, I would hope that you could work with city manager and the pub, uh, public works director to figure out how to be as successful as you can, because they've got six dedicated grounds people. So, that, because y'all do like the garrison lawn, but it's not your building. Now, I appreciate you handling the rental on it, but I'm just handling the community building, uh, and so outside, so it's, they're looking at all of that and working together so that it's, you're able to achieve it, because I, I don't know how y'all does. And Franklin Square Park was awesome. Y'all have done amazing work with these two people, but I don't think that's sustainable, long-term.
It's not, we, they didn't say we need more.
So, I mean, I think now you need, but anyway, so, no. I mean, does Parks and Rec, um, okay, so, public works still have six people dedicated to grounds work? And that, that takes into account that two people were moved over to Parks and Rec. Correct, they have six. Still, et cetera, public works still has six. Correct.
So there's eight.
So that's why I'm saying it's unrealistic to think they're managing all of this with two people without being able to, to have work orders, and that's why I'm saying to have the software, so your community, it's an easy thing to communicate and work together, because we've got all kinds of departments that work together to achieve the best outcome. So, I think, and particularly that, and, and, well, I, I hundred percent believe you need maintenance people in your purview, because that's how you're gonna better manage what all needs to be done.
Any other questions?
I, I'm gonna. Uh, one was, and I don't know, this might be a Joey question, uh, that, uh, I noticed in, uh, the part of public work budget, he had put in two-point-five colon, I don't see that in this for the.
It, sorry, the description says not there, but it does include the three percent colon was proposed.
Well, it only, we're only going up from last year to this year, four thousand two hundred for salaries. Uh, I'm looking at the full-time, the six full-time people, the colon would be nine-three-hundred if you took that same, that same amount, the three-seventy-five from what we adopted this year. So I don't, I don't know. There's something, these are just.
The three-seventy-five adopted last year, if you look year-to-date, these are year-to-date with the payroll that was just recently run. Um, we may have an overage in there, that adopted budget amount may have been too high last year.
Oh.
Um, but the request does factor in.
A colon.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. And then, um, the other, this is maybe a question for Heather. What I remember about the city bus is you were retiring, retiring the city bus and giving it to Charles for like evacuations. So.
Then it was getting that, uh, the government.
Oh, oh, so there's a third.
Yeah, so it, 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 we need to carry, um, a maximum of forty-five kids.
Okay.
Um, to replace what we carried on the bus, and we have two fifteen passengers now, and so we need one more. Um, but, and the money, the budget was approved, but it was never taken out, but the launch of that in last year, no new vehicles. So that's why we did more for a van, which is like you said, you know, change the issue.
The twenty-two fifty is employee cost, it doesn't include the cost of the, uh, transportation insurances or anything like that.
It includes the fuel costs, but no, it, it doesn't delve into the months we call the van.
That would be, going forward, that would be part of the cost if you add into all of this, the cost of the, the cost. Whether it's the building, maintain the building, whether it's the vehicles, whether it's, whatever it is, then everything goes into that cost, you're trying to do it, you're trying to figure it out with the real cost. Uh, we, we have traditionally, we rely on the salary of the employee as opposed to the true cost of the work, any work.
The only reason I ask about bus is, it's a fifty-one hundred repair, and I put a new foot on it, it's a different thing, so I didn't know. Um, that's what I was looking at to understand why we wanted to repair it when I thought it was gonna be retired. So does that bus have seatbelts in it?
No. I don't think any bus has seatbelts.
Well, I didn't know that.
It is, we didn't follow what buses had, we have, isn't it?
But we have. I was just curious, I thought maybe now it was required or something.
You know, the new bus coming off of lots, like a Thomas bus, I have a lot of friends who work there, do you have seatbelts that require wider state? But they are not before.
Yeah.
Just because they're brand new. But the price they have.
Uh, you know, looking at, if I'm looking at the final number, you actually, uh, even with inflation, this budget is six, almost six percent less than last year's budget, so just, just to put that number.
And Karen, the request for capital vehicles does include a new lease for a third van so they can stop using the bus, and that way all kids have seatbelts. So it's included in that line item, which is still a ten-thousand-dollar reduction over this year's budget. Can we lease some of those or? Correct, the current bus is leased for thirteen-hundred dollars a month through our enterprise fleet.
No, not the van.
Oh, the van, sorry. Yeah, sorry, the van, so it would be a, we've got to float in for a third van, we own one outright, we lease one, lease one, and I have a quote come from our enterprise, right? And those are like for your lease, six months.
That's all.
Got it now?
Two, two.
So.
Good question.
Oh, that seems a little strong, sixty-month lease? That's standard for the fleet management program they have as part of all of our vehicles are in sixty-month leases with enterprise. So, or the thirteen-hundred is for that one van? Correct, it's a twenty-twenty-three Ford Transit three-fifty passenger van, fifteen-passenger van.
Right.
Well, it just seems a little, I mean, that seems.
Seventy-five?
Yeah. It comes out to that van for biggers, fifteen thousand five ninety a year.
Okay, if I remember correctly, that's the cutoff for needing a C D L is when you go above fifteen. That's when you need the C D L rather than you and I be able to drive fifteen passenger.
Well, we got another fifteen passenger, I, I mean, that just seems like, uh, that seems pretty expensive for that kind of lease term. So I would think we could buy one of those vans, even if it's free on for a fraction of that cost, but maybe I'm wrong, I've had not a fifteen-passenger.
Vehicle.
Vehicle right now. Not at that much.
Is there any other questions? We're gonna ask the manager to, on Thursday from that, give us an idea of when, how long it would take to put together a plan, a plan, that's the wrong word, a review of the buildings, and ask you to do it like that. Um, see how we start that process.
Maybe it was not.
We often start talking about good ideas, but we don't actually force us ourselves to come back and visit it. So on Thursday, you come back and say, whatever it is, we're looking at this, and these are some of the, these are some of the avenues we're going, just to push the conversation down the line of the building we're talking about. In other words, if we're gonna, can we take one building and take it offline, maximize the other buildings we have, so we don't have the cost of the other buildings.
Um, Mark, has the cemetery committee done anything in regards to kind of pricing out cost of construction on Calenderian?
Thank you, Mr. Miller's been helping with trying to get some, I'm saying with, with.
I mean, what do you think?
Income to build up a perpetual care system is probably needed. Um, it's over in that corner. J C building's a weird building, it's in the middle of residential community, it's sort of like, it was good at one time, I'm not sure.
What do you think about the, the, the use of that space where the senior building is?
How many, how much land is there?
I, I can tell you, I looked it up, I didn't get any indication, more or less. If we remove the senior building, we'd have a third of an acre.
There is.
And that would still leave acres, because it's point seven-five for the whole parcel. So if you leave the J C building, which is on block, brick veneer, got new windows. Build it all back, so that would leave, you could do like, probably parts.
Even if you had two hundred in there, sooner or later, it's gonna be not, you know, I guess, there's only somebody more usually gonna use that kind of a thing. The cemetery engine, it's almost filled up to, uh, get by.
I think they get west four places that they.
Yes.
The, for, so anyways.
So anyway, it's interesting, but your committee, get your committee to bring in on all that.
Any other questions? If not, then, uh, I think that's it. I was entertaining with them. Do you have anything else?
They want to, yeah, y'all feel like you don't need to see this.
You made it, made it, see you in March.
This first video is just about the, um, program that we were talking about. It's one of the national junior tennis in my program for the big year.
The Brunswick County Tennis Association NJTL worked with USTA Southern and the North Carolina Tennis Foundation in providing a summer program in cooperation with the Southport Parks and Recreation Department and LC Outreach. They also collaborated with Cedar Grove Middle School and LC Outreach in offering an after school program in supply North Carolina. The summer program received a two-year grant from USTA Southern. It involved educational time in the classroom with computers and teachers, and then an on-court session with volunteers from the Brunswick County Community Tennis Association. At the end of the program, each child received a bag filled with school supplies and computer software supplied by LC Outreach. Each camper received a racket, tennis balls, and a T-shirt from the Brunswick County Tennis Association. Power Walking Ministries gave each camper a brand new pair of tennis shoes. The after school NJTL program in supply met twice a week for sixteen weeks. Each session included an hour of tutoring and an hour of tennis lessons.
Um, I love Cedar Grove Middle School. Um, as you know, we are a Title I school, which means the majority of our students receive free or reduced lunch. Um, in this day and age, dealing with, in my opinion, dealing with students, things have totally changed. The majority of them are being raised by, um, extended family or either they have foster parents or, um, they're not living with biological parents. Some of them don't even have the one parent in the household. Um, a lot of them don't have a place to actually sit and do homework at home, or they don't have anyone there to assist them. Um, if they run into problems with their homework, being able to explain it to them. Um, and most of our families cannot afford fee-based tutoring assistance for their, um, child.
We're not about the teacher being up there. We, we are there to structure and make things, make sure that things are moving, but we want the children, main thing is the children are to be engaged. That's how they learn, to participate, hands-on activities. And so that is another reason why having tennis, getting out there with their peers, doing the teamwork. Oh, I want to do this first, or they organize and a leader.
They'll know their teacher, like they'll have had the same teacher and say, oh, we did that last year. They can help.
We can even sit here without kids when they come out to play tennis. It's like they released something. It's like something's coming off of them. They're taking something off of them. Yeah.
Right.
You see them out there for the first time. To them, it's like someone's like the first sport they've ever been in because they've never been on any kind of team or anything, you know? Uh, even because they've been trying out and didn't make it, or they're likely have Parks and Recs and everything. Well, the parents can't give them to all the different games and stuff, or they can't afford to pay for the, you know, tuition or whatever point of being. So it's a great advantage for them.
It's very nice because the tennis courts are just right on the other side of the parking lot.
It's like they, they have, uh, this pattern they do. They have a set back here doing their, um, the computers and everything with time. They have math and she does, they have math and like it's a day that everybody comes and teaches stuff, uh, Spanish and it's all different stuff. So it's a day, I mean, um, during the hour, they're here, some of the kids are here, and then we take the other bunch to them, to the tennis court. And it just all works out. So when they finish.
The pitch loft.
That's right.
Yeah. Oh, the other thing we do, we do is shoes. We give them all shoes.
Yes.
Because it used to be when we were working with Cookies Program that, uh,
They had footfalls.
The flops and that, they couldn't.
Yeah, they couldn't participate. So.
Now we, everybody gets a new pair of shoes.
Of tennis shoes. I mean, not, really, they get real, I mean, like, not, they have Nike, Adidas. I mean, nice tennis shoes. And the parents say, okay, after that program's over, you put them back in the box because you can wear them. And, you know, they did.
It's the school shoes when they start.
Exactly. They were some of the starting school shoes. Yeah.
Wow, that's amazing.
But it warms your heart though, when you see they, the kids appreciate it and the parents appreciate it. So.
Either Coach Bob or Coach, uh, Coach Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we go to the tennis court and they help us with that.
Yeah.
Sometimes they make up little games for us to play. And we're, we're like, I remember that somebody had to get, um, two tennis balls and they had to like, there's this little tennis ball in the middle and two rackets on the top and they. It was like showing you friendship.
I, I do have another question now. We deferred maintenance on the tennis court surfaces. So what, where are you in all of that now?
Well, it's been the CIP and we've, uh, asked, I mean,
It's in the list.
A red, a, a red thing, say urgent to resurface that corpse.
And that's the ones that don't like and.
Um, for Johnson.
When you, when you put that up, how many people did we get bid on?
Usually get three.
You do, you do get that? It seem like astronomical, not long before resurfacing some tennis courts.
Yeah, um, they.
I mean, some of the HOAs are doing it for a lot less money and they're just trying to figure out why. And they have, one next to my house is huge, every day, five hours a day. So it's not like it's, doesn't get used. Um, I'm just trying to figure out why our RFPs are just so, so much more money. Is that, am I accurate in framing on that?
I think we're going to hear from tennis players in Southport on Thursday night on this topic. At the quality of the surface. Yes, exactly.
Well, it's, but once again, it's like that massive cost that got stuck last year. How much it was.
I have an answer.
Six thousand.
Well, I, I mean, they, they will be able to give us chapter and verse on what's wrong with tennis.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's easy, but the Harden lot is paying for it. So my question is, now that the RFP is a year old, do we have to, if we were going to go forward, do we have to do a new one?
Um, to get an accurate price, yes, because their prices now, we're going to be looking at tariffs and patents and the last year, I mean, that's the thing, because that's, um, right now, we can't, we cannot get it to do the Franklin Square Park when it comes, um, from Canada. So that's not happening. And we would have to use ripper rock, changes the dynamics of it. So, um, so yes, we will need, um, do, um, I don't know if the RFP needs to change, but the, we have to ask for a new, because those prices are nowhere near what the truth is going to be.
And probably the bids had a thirty day expiration or some kind of need to strike these.
Well, certainly we can reach out to the O's or HOAs. And you can, you can get us that name. We can follow up with the O's. We can get a bad price.
Is it fair to say that tennis courts on Leonard Street get more use than the ones downtown?
I think we'll use them to practice, but.
Well, I mean, one of the issues that I have is that in either of those parks, you're getting in a vehicle to go somewhere. So most people aren't walking to either of these tennis courts. They're getting in a vehicle and going to them. And right now, the county, uh, courts are incredible. So you go out to Smithville Park, which is not that much further, and they are as good as any court you could imagine. So if we were going to do a court, I would prefer that we consider Leonard Street and, and hold off on the downtown court.
I don't play tennis, so.
So you don't care.
I don't, I mean, I just, I don't have any, um.
But there's that, there's that issue of duplication of services. They have Smithville Woods. That's the, with Smithville Park. And, and it's a huge park and it has lots of services on it. It's just on the other side of the border. So how much money do we spend resurfacing two sets of tennis courts? Then, then there's the big long-term object that some of us had conversation about. Let me just throw it out there so people could start getting on the screen.
Um, I'll do it for you.
That's going to get you to a parking.
A community building, they have no parking.
It has no parking. They were renting that building two hundred times a year for weddings. And there's no parking anywhere. Uh, and, and we're, we're stuck with that issue. I'm not talking about paving. I'm talking about a, 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 a service, parking lot that would help service that. Because now with our demographics, if you want to attend that building, you're parking a long ways away and hiking your tail into the building. So that's another issue about, if we're making a fair amount of money, we're renting the community building. We have a historical problem with parking issues. And, and we have this beautiful set of facilities, mile and a half down the road. So as we move forward, those are some of the things we have to kind of weigh our, and balance what we're trying to do here.
There's a dusty old, uh, survey and, um, study done maybe ten, eight or ten years ago on what changing the, uh, ten, Fort Johnson tennis courts to parking would be, how many parking spaces? You know, of course, the cost is irrelevant. I mean, if you were near what today's reality is, but how much, uh, parking would we gain? How would this affect the playground, which is right on, uh, right in front of the tennis courts and so on? Uh, this may be in storage, you know, storage unit out or, uh, something more. I don't know. We, I mean, we don't necessarily have to start from zero if we're going to consider this because some of this has already been done. It's more than ten years old, I can tell you that. Like I said, dusty, dusty. But, but, you know, the how many, how many spaces would we get and so on? And, uh, didn't we have the, the playground there ten years ago or twelve, fifteen years ago?
We give away our parks for free, so there's new money coming in.
Well, at the moment.
Now we're not getting, uh, recreation, the rest of, I can't remember.
Doing away with the, the recreation facility.
Anything, either building, just affects not much more than just on the surface.
Yeah.
And I, when we, yeah, when we come up with these ideas, we're just trying, right? We're trying to do the best we can with what we can. And we know that you are too. So you've probably had these ideas or trying to figure out how to make your budget work and. We can say.
I thought.
We, we actually, if I, if I say yes, then everybody in the world.
Go whisper in Heather's ear.
Just procedure, procedure like that. You can talk to us on Thursday.
So the issue that you've had is that we're not doing this tomorrow. If you have comments, forward them to the manager, forward them to Heather, forward them to us. We're just in the discussion phase now. What does this look like? What do you get? What's the cost benefit analysis of doing it? How do you maximize the region? Because you have, you have to figure out how. And when, when you do that, somebody gets squeezed, some program, they is not there, but you're getting something else in place. How do you weigh all? We're in the discussion phase now. And it's not going to be done in this budget here. So. We've got time.
Right, right, Courtney. Always strong memories. Mr. Robert's son and I play tennis on that court, tennis, former, the tennis coach. And, uh, it's awful fun to sit there with the wind blowing and, and playing tennis there. Sort of different.
I can only tell you, Mark, that almost every time I go around that building, that tennis court.
Yeah, I see them full most of the time.
You do? Yeah. I think you're, you're making me back here.
See, I live on Moore Street. So, so, so it, it, it's, uh, it is, it's a luxury, sort of like Pebble Beach being on the ocean. It's a luxury to play tennis on those tennis courts. It's, you can have the, the Brunswick County tennis courts. I'll play in that court any day. And again, it's, it's, once, once you do it, you watch while you're playing, the ship go by or something like that. So, uh, I'll probably have to fight for the tennis courts.
And that's what makes it, Mark, it's great.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, a question. For the kids who, uh, do tennis as part of our before and after school and summer program, they're welcome, right?
From the best of Fort Johnson. Yes.
So there's that.
You have to associate my brain. You have to associate.
My brain, the tennis.
Yeah. Okay. Once a year, they use the, the, and then to go as well. That's a really good program.
Yeah.
We weren't able to accommodate them this year because of construction. Very good program.
At least one, yeah. Active Karen.
Any other?
I will, I will say one quick last thing today is Joey's first official A as finance director. Welcome him to that official leadership, uh, stage and, uh, Lance will be transitioning, uh, to remain supporting us through that transition. We're excited for, for that and for Joey to, to lead us forward in the final time if we get it forward in this budget.
Is there anything else? I want to, uh, thank the Parks and Rec committee members that are here for coming. They're always welcome. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any motion in a second? Any conversation? Not hearing any, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?